...for that matter. And I would encourage you to control your meeting and your council chambers. And I just don't think it's appropriate. So again, I'm completely against politicizing a virus in the mask ordinance. I think that people need to take personal responsibility, as we all do in every situation. You wear sunscreen, you wear a seatbelt, whatever it may be. And we have to look at science over politics. And again, I do not agree with the mask ordinance purely for enforcement, but I would encourage you to take control of your meetings and to also continue to be good stewards of city like Geneva residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
We live at A and B Road, Lowermore Drive, Lake Geneva. I was sitting here listening to all these people, and I enjoyed listening to their personal stories. And I look around at them this night, and they struck me as every one of them intelligent enough to make a good decision about their lives. And I don't think it's particularly important what this issue is about the masks. I think they're worse than us personally, but I think what they need to think about is the Constitution of the United States and what is risked in this situation. And it's not just one time, one little thing. It's a big thing. And the Constitution of the United States is, makes us all subject to the will of God, to natural rights that were very well argued out by the English settlers. And that's all we need to think about. What direction is our freedom going? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Yes, sir. Either one.
Rex Rock, 1157 South Winkle Street in Lake Geneva. I'm the founder of Walworth County Watch. It's a new organization. We are activated. We are angry. We will be watching your political offices, your decisions going forward. Nobody is safe to keep their elected office if you do not follow the will of the people. We are energetic. We will fight to preserve our rights. So heed that advice, and listen to us, respect us, and we'll leave you alone. Otherwise, we will oppose reelection at all costs, politically speaking. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Michelle Willard. I live at N 3169 Acacia Road in Lake Geneva. I also own Heart and Soul Cafe at 264 Center Street in Lake Geneva. And I just want to start out with, my freedom does not end because of a person's fear. And then another thing is, if your mask is working, then why would you worry if I'm going to wear one or not? This is way more about compliance than it is about protecting me from a virus or you from a virus that has killed way less people than the flu has. And if that's the case, why am I seeing masks litter the ground everywhere we go instead of biohazard bins sitting left and right for people to dispose of those? Another thing that's lost me with the effectiveness of masks is why are convicts released from prison instead of giving them masks in jail and keeping them in there? Another thing is, if you're upset that I won't wear a mask right now, you're going to be very upset when I will not get the vaccine when they do get back. Something that's really been bothering me is people who approach us non-maskers, and just the hate in them. I know that they are approaching us from fear, and I try to understand them as much as I possibly can, but when they're sitting there wishing death, making death threats on people because they're not wearing a mask. Just in Florida, on the 25th, a lady maced two people outside who were eating lunch, outside in a park. She maced them because of that. And I just don't get where this violence is coming from, like, if they're so worried. So, you know, and another lady did already mention that wearing a mask reduces the oxygen intake that we breathe, that we're taking in CO2. The serious side effects can occur of, like, oxygen levels drop. They have kids in other countries that are, like, working out gym class, and they're dropping down to the ground. So, you know, I'm going to say, my body, my choice. And another thing is, be careful when you follow the masks, because sometimes the "M" is silent. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Where is ma'am? Me? Yes. Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
My name is Katie Nagel, and I live at N 2406 Charles Oak Drive, Burlington, Wisconsin. I am a Lake Geneva worker. I grew up here. I went to school here. I graduated from UW-Whitewater. I want to teach here someday. This year, my children are going to school, so this is something that's very important to me to be involved in, especially if I have something to say about it or complain about it. But first off, I want to thank all the speakers that have come up here for standing up for themselves and everybody else. One of the things I like to say is that I respect those who are standing up for what they think is health concerns, but I also want to thank those that understand I and others are here to stand up for constitutional rights. These things aren't necessarily the same. Some things that I think are very problematic in communication, like I said, I have a background in elementary education. These masks for kids, I sat in a first grade lesson where we all practiced sticking our tongues out to say, "I think so." "I thought so." Not "I think so, I thought so," Miss Katie. You know, we have to practice these things. They need to see our faces. We like to see each other's faces and facial expressions, and it helps us communicate as adults. Little children literally are watching our mouth shapes. It's how they create words. It's how they are learning what to say and... Also, deaf and hearing, that's something that's also prevalent in my family. And in Delavan, Wisconsin, we are discriminating against the folks in Delavan who are no longer able to read our lips as their form of communication. And I'm glad somebody brought up the point of litter, because I myself have been very upset. I work at two different places in the area, and one of my comments was, "What are we going to do with all of these gloves and masks? Are we trying to create a ski hill over here?" I mean, we have funds for that. Or somebody said something about trash cans on the lake path. Is that what we're going for? Because I was pretty sure the lake path is, make sure you take everything that you bring out, you know, off of the lake path. It shouldn't be messy. And the other, the final thought I just have a question about is, how are we possibly going to enforce this? Is this going to jeopardize our law enforcement safety further than it already is? And what are the repercussions? As was stated earlier, people were just let out of jail. So was that to prevent the stop of coronavirus or to make room for others? And I guess that's, that's all I have to say, and I thank you very kindly for listening to my opinion. I do have to say one more time, I don't know how it is to speak through your mask, but as a waitress, speaking through my mask, I'm constantly inhaling it, I'm eating my mask. I'm ready to find a different job or go back to farming, because I know I won't have to wear a mask doing that. So that's also consideration. What are we doing to each other? My confidence has gone down, my acne's come out, and I am not happy for lots of reasons. And I want to help people stay safe, but I think that there are other things that are being neglected. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? State your name and address, please.
My name's Tom Wanda, 9712 Wright Road, Harvard, Illinois. I'm a mile and a half from the border. But just so you know, my wife and I, and our six children, we all live in the area. We have a lot of friends, a lot of kids, and everybody is against the mandate, even though we're in Illinois. I do have one daughter in Wisconsin. She's smart. But we decided that if there was a mask mandate, we would not come up here. I won't go to stores that require it or restaurants that require it, because that's my free will, right? I remember a long time ago, before smoking was prohibited everywhere, remember there were smoking restaurants and there were bars, and there were non-smoking restaurants and bars? At the time, I thought, that's fine, you know? If you don't want to go into that smoking restaurant, you have every right to not go in that smoking restaurant. Well, it's the same way it should be with this, with the mask. We should have the free will, and the owners of those restaurants should have the free will to make the decision themselves. Do we want to mandate masks in this residence? It's their business. They can do what they want. Or they don't have to. And then let people make the choice. We shouldn't be telling people what to do. It really has to do with their health, right? We shouldn't be telling people what to do with their health, especially just because more and more we're realizing the problems with this virus. It's not that bad. Saying it's not any worse than the flu. And so why are we going to these extremes when we've never gone to these extremes before with other things that happened, like the SARS thing and what was the other one in '09? I can't remember. But, you know, and then we're worse. There were more cases then, and nobody went to those extremes. The normal thing is people that are vulnerable should stay home or wear a mask if they feel that that helps them. And the people that are feeling good and all right, go out and go to work and live your life in a normal way. So, thank you very, we love this area. We spend a lot of money, right, in this area, because we live in Illinois and there's nothing going on anymore. But even before that, you know, I'm part of YMCA, part of, I have massage therapists here, my chiropractors here. We do a lot of our shopping and everything. We love this area. We want to keep coming back. I hope you guys don't make this mandatory. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
I'm Robert Saraka, 1834 Lowermore Drive in Lake Geneva. This whole episode, not just the virus and masks, points out to me how great our system is in this country, where a small minority generally doesn't have the ability to tell the other ones what to do. Back in the 30s, we tried, in 20s, we tried prohibition, because some people didn't like that other people drank. We saw what a disaster that was. Fortunately, our system of government permits the writing of silly things like that. But there's history in every place that man has ever existed, people who wanted to tell other people what to do. One of the speakers previously told, talked about being approached by people who violently sometimes objected to not wearing a mask. I think these are not people who are scared. They just want to tell you what to do. And this is a perfect example, a perfect avenue for being able to tell you what to do. Now, at the top of our government in Washington, there's Dr. Fauci. He has lied repeatedly and by his own admission deliberately about masks. He said they weren't necessary, and he said the reason was he didn't want the supply of masks depleted by people so that they could be used by people in the medical profession. This guy, the other day, you must have seen him, he was at, a baseball guy to throw out the first pitch at a baseball game, Dr. Fauci. He's shown in the stands with two people right next to him, two people on his side with that mask. He takes off his mask. It's famously recorded. He puts the mask, or hands down in order to get a drink. Well, okay, Dr. Fauci, if you're so concerned about social distancing and your, that one or two breaths that come out of your mouth and nose, why don't you excuse yourself to some other part of the stadium? But no, he's, he's not really subject to the same rules that we are, or he wants us to be. The next thing you'll see is Dr. Fauci dancing with the stars. He really loves to see himself under the bright lights of publicity. He told us the other day, I think it was, that this may never go away. All right, shall we be masked now forever? Shall we be masked when the next severe flu happens upon us? Well, I get the point. I'm very happy we don't have one alderman. We have several, so that one person can't tell the others, tell all of us what to do. It's good that we have this debate. I urge you to not vote for a mandatory mask ordinance in Lake Geneva. The people are certainly able to do so, mask or unmask, and you saw a few minutes ago how effective talcum powder going through the masks is. The RNA particles of the virus, when you take one of these cheap dollar masks, the particles see effectively what a water hose would see with a chain link fence. The water goes right through them. Those RNA particles are so small, they go right through here. So they don't protect anybody. They may in fact make you sick if you read that stuff all day. Anyway, I appreciate your having this opportunity for people to handle.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else want to comment this evening? Yes, sir, over on the side. State your name and address, please.
I'm Charlie. Bob Hill, 523 South Lake Shore Drive, Lake Geneva. Yes, I suffer from stomach, you need problems, but... I'm certainly, I'm listening to, is on channel 25, and my daughter answered, didn't she? And she didn't speak quite as closely as I would have liked it to. My point is, we're sitting arguing here about a condition that might save lives. But I hear all this choice, choice. These are the same people who will not allow a woman who is pregnant to rape or incest having abortion, and yet they stand up here and say, "Choice of American freedoms." Don't tell me about American freedoms. I'm a retired Air Force fighter pilot. I flew 200 combat missions in Vietnam, and never once, as we were flying over Hanoi, the most heavily defended target in aerial warfare, and we were rolling in on the target push-up get-out, I knew times over Vietnam, North Vietnam, I never once did I ever hear anybody say, "This is for God and country." God's excuse to get out to catch my plane. Smoke again, some Tessa's involved in here.
Take your time, Bob.
All right.
Take your time.
Okay, hi. Hi. The, you know, it's wonderful. I hear people who've been brought in, um, out of town. I didn't know, I thought you had to be contiguous to city limits of Lake Geneva to be able to speak. And I don't know why that's changed, has it, Charlie? The, I'm saying, this country is becoming a very undisciplined group of people. We are losing respect in the rest of the world because of actions just like this. The rest of the country is turned to do it. Is a mask going to do that much good? I don't know, but it's not a matter of a mask. It's a matter of discipline. But how can we expect to have discipline when we have leadership in the federal government who doesn't think he should have to wear a mask? He was not elected by popular vote. He was elected by an archaic system that was put in place by a good friend south of the Mason-Dixon line, so they could count their slaves and women. And I have reason to have more respect for the leadership in Washington, because I was fighting combat over Hanoi at the same time that John McCain got shot down. Now, to have somebody who paid a doctor to say that he had bone spurs, so he could get elected and condemn the chiefs of staff of our military, of whom I happen to know a couple of them, what can we expect? We can expect things like this. You can't tell me what I'm doing, and you know where that comes from. So I don't know who to endorse this vote on the mask tonight, but I commend them for doing it. It's showing some discipline, which a lot of you people are not. And I think I have every right. It's sad, sad, sad to see, this is not representative of Lake Geneva, which is quite obvious by the number of people who aren't here from Lake Geneva. So I say pass the damn ordinance, let's get some discipline. And I'm not speaking to come an old first sergeant, although I worked my way up out of the ranks to retire as a lieutenant colonel.
Your timer's up.
Are you timing it?
There's a timer behind me there.
Yeah, but hope there's a sense of even discipline.
I'm sorry.
See, I'm having a little trouble breathing, and I heard some guy get up here, "We are lax, we want women, and surgeons, people, though we're reelected." And somebody did have a good comment, Charlie. I think we have a policy that there'll be no verbal or physical reactions to comments, i.e. clapping, hissing, all the rest without redneck operations. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, guys. Hey, you.
Thank you, Bob.
The Walworth one.
Yeah, me.
That's directed, you were listed.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
I've got six chicks in there, but they're hungry as well.
Hey, hi, guys.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? How about the two young ladies in the back? Are you going together, or? Well, I think maybe somebody can assist her with the microphone? I think this is passively our youngest speaker for this evening. If you can tell us your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Inola. We live at N 520. I think it's right for you guys to wear masks, but you guys shouldn't force us to, because you guys put your masks in cup holders in your pockets, and you pull them out, touch them. You shouldn't do that. And I think that you guys should let us what we should do, and just do what you guys want to do. And that's all I really have to say.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am, in the yellow shirt. State your name and address, please. You can reposition the microphone.
I'll just deal with it like that. My name's Madison Elmore. I live at N 520 Prairie View Road in Walworth. We do all of our shopping in Lake Geneva, whether it be the town of Lake Geneva or the city of Lake Geneva. We spend hundreds of dollars between Walmart and Target and the small shops in town, so I think I deserve a say, because we do all of our commerce here. I wanted to address a few things. Discipline does not equal blind trust and obedience. I am going to question everything everyone says to see if it's right for me and my family, because masks are not a one-size-fits-all. What's okay for you is not okay for the next person. We all have different bodies. We all have different lifestyles. We all have different beliefs and values, and that should matter, so you should take that into account. I think this, you guys work for the people. We voted you into office. It doesn't matter if we're clapping or not. I think we should be allowed to express ourselves, our likes and dislikes. I walked around the town this past Friday to talk to some of the businesses, to see how they felt about mask mandates, and to give them the heads up about you guys voting and discussing mask mandates tonight. A majority of the businesses were terrified of you guys. They were scared to death to come up here and speak out of the words of their own mouths. They did not want to come up here because of repercussions from the alderman. What does this say? Does this breed trust? It, it sounds like a lot of fear to me. One man said he rents his shop from the city, and he doesn't want to come up here and speak, even though he opposes mask mandates, because he is scared of getting in trouble from the city for speaking out. That's really sad. Is this a high school clique? Because that's what it sounds like. Everyone's terrified of you guys. I don't think you should be treating people like that. Your town folk and city folk should not be, you shouldn't be known to them for this type of thing. You need to stand up and support freedom, individuality, freedom of choice, not mandates. You need to support knowledge and healthy immune systems. Talk to your people. Make yourselves open to the business owners and not have them scared of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am, in the back there. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Heidi Anderson. Thank you for your time today. I'm a resident of southern Wisconsin as well. I don't want to give my address, and I hope other people won't, because I'm nervous about some of the threats that people are getting and being given, especially the children who are here, so I hope that you'll be safe, and I trust that your officer is here in the city, will keep you safe. And thank you, because we back the badge. I want to, I want to share a story. First of all, there was a gentleman who was a veteran who spoke a few minutes ago, and he was a veteran of the Vietnam War. My father is a veteran of the World War II, of World War II, and he served proudly. And he is 97 years old now. I'm gonna tell you a story about him in one second. My grand, my great-grandfather died after serving in World War I. He didn't die, he didn't die from the war. He died from the 1918 plague. And I have the benefit, because my father is 97 years old, of hearing a lot of history, and I have my whole life. Let me tell you what is killing me right now. A lot of people have said many things about liberty here, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I come from a very large family. I cannot even name one person that didn't serve. I can't even think of one person that didn't serve in the military all the way back. My father, in the town I was born and raised in, Minneapolis, Minnesota, northeast Minneapolis, lived there his whole life. He was a professional. He was the only white-collar professional on our block. And we chose to live where we live deliberately because we are not snobs. My dad had to enter an assisted living after my mother passed away a couple of years ago. And he is in one of the most expensive assisted livings in the state. He moved from northeast Minneapolis down to Edina. Since this started, my father was walking a mile a day at age 97 to maintain his health, maintain his strength, has not been able to walk. He has been on lockdown. If I want to see him, I have to drive six and a half hours, talk to him through a window on the phone. Now they're opening up, so I can sit six feet apart from him with a mask on, and our conversations are supervised. Let me tell you, the number of people who are dying, and I don't need to tell you the statistics. Everybody can do their math. These are very smart people that are in your constituency, including myself, with 30 years in human resources. We can all do our math. But here's what you're not thinking about. He started this, being able to walk a mile a day. He is now behind a walker. He is losing his strength, and I'm afraid that the next time I see my father will be in his coffin. And that is not an unusual situation. It is going on all over the country. Southern Wisconsin is no different. I love this, I love this area. I spent a lot of money here in Lake Geneva. I love all of you patriots, and I thank every one of you for your service, if you served, to defend freedom and our constitution, which guarantees the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And we are failing on all three fronts right now. So I urge you to join the community here in southern Wisconsin, as well as all of Wisconsin, which is organizing to patronize people who support freedom and to boycott those that don't. And we are organizing. You can look it up online. Everybody's got the internet. But we're not gonna stand for this, and I hope you will not stand for it either. And God bless all of you, and God bless America. Let's keep it, let's keep it free.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Adrienne Malby. My address is 2821 Circle Drive, Burlington, Wisconsin, 53105. I'm standing up here on behalf of my son tonight. He works in Lake Geneva. He will be a senior this fall, and he plans to go for an electrical apprenticeship right out of high school. He's been working 40 to 50 hours a week in Lake Geneva this summer. It's a job that he's had for two years, and he absolutely loves it because he can work outside, work by the water. And up until now, there's been no issue with needing to wear a mask. I fear for the young men and women who are working on or by the peers or outside if they're having to wear a mask while they're outside. We know what the weather has been like the last few days. It feels like it's hard to breathe even if you're not wearing a mask. I don't know that I would necessarily require him to quit his job, but I would encourage it if masks were mandated in Lake Geneva because I fear for his health and his safety in that situation. I also have friends and family who live in Illinois, and I know that they've come to Lake Geneva just to be able to breathe easier and not have to wear masks. And I do, I do know personally that they would not frequent Lake Geneva anymore if there was a mask mandate. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Please state your name and address.
My name is Tom Van Mary. I live at 800 South Lake Shore Drive in Lake Geneva. This is the first time I ever got up to speak in this forum. I've been a resident, full-time resident here for 22 years. And I was here 20 years before that as a part-time resident. And I was watching, the reason I came is because I was watching the program on Channel 25, and I saw Bob come up. Bob wasn't, was watching on MTV as well. And I think he made some very good comments. He fought for you, all of us. A fighter pilot. And that was one of the reasons I decided to come. Because I fought in Vietnam too. I was in the infantry. I fought down in Kuchi. Somebody may have heard of the Kuchi tunnels. I was wounded three times in combat. And so I think I'm a pretty loyal patriot. I'm not, I want to try not to get political about this, but, you know, we all have our axes to grind. Many of you believe in the government that we have right now in Washington, D.C. Several months ago, somebody asked me who I was gonna vote for. And at that time, we didn't know who the candidate was gonna be. And so I said, I don't know who I'm gonna vote for, but if Mickey Mouse is running, I'm gonna vote for him. I think this whole thing about masks comes down to not protecting yourself, but protecting others. And that's what we ought to be thinking about now. We haven't had a pandemic like this since 1918, when millions of people across the globe died. And we could be in that same situation again if we don't do at least something about it. Masks may not be the answer. The scientists tell us it is. It will at least help us. So I think we ought to listen to them. Again, I know, I was a little disturbed when I heard some of the people that came up and where they were from. And I think the city council ought to consider that we limit our comments from the public to residents of Lake Geneva, instead of allowing people from Illinois who went through a very, very serious time of the pandemic being accelerated. And now we're going through the same thing in Wisconsin. I'm not blaming the people from Illinois. But if you look at the people in Wisconsin when they became infected, it was three weeks after Memorial Day, three weeks after the Fourth of July, and now we've got Labor Day coming up. I just hope everybody will respect everybody else's opinion. If they want to wear a mask, let them wear a mask. Or the other people, not for themselves.
Thank you very much. I think the young lady over there would like to speak. State your name and the address, please.
I am not able to state my name and address because I'm part of the Safe at Home program, but I would still like the freedom to speak. It's a victim-witness protection program through Wisconsin. And I'm sure some of you, you should know about it. Okay, I came here, first and foremost, for our freedom of choice. I have another issue with the mask mandate. And I, some of you have seen this sign. We were down at the county fighting this. This is not the only health concern that would fall under. The masks exacerbating our conditions, okay? There's something called the American Disability Act that protects me and a lot of others. It was amended in 2008 by George Bush, thank God, for people like me. When you look at me, you might think she looks like a perfectly healthy individual. No problems, right? I'm not in a wheelchair. Something that would be obvious. I'm not blind or deaf. And even the deaf, it's not always obvious. I tried wearing the mask one time in a store that was requiring it. I had the worst migraine. I'd been hospitalized before for migraines, and my asthma was aggravated. If I had to wear the mask all the time to do business, I could have an asthma attack and die. When George Bush amended this in 2008, it was to cover people like me with breathing disabilities, walking disabilities, brain, mental disabilities. They're not obvious, okay? All my children have asthma. My son, who's 16, becomes a skateboard all the time because it's his passion and he's awesome at what he does. Rides to the point where he is drenched. He was on a nebulizer as a baby, breathing treatments, okay? Now, I've spent the last five years alleviating as much as I can of our inflammation by changing diet, by doing things that I can do to keep us off steroids and being on those for life, okay? All my kids have had reactive airway disease, been on inhalers. It's just, to think of him having to go to a skate park and wear a mask out in public when he's drenched in sweat. I mean, how do you breathe? There are so many things wrong with this. And, and I respect the people that got up here who fought. War is ugly. It's a necessary thing at times. But innocent people die. And, you know, the freedom, let me just, let me just say, okay, for this specific thing with disabilities and breathing issues, people with emphysema, okay? People who are claustrophobic have anxiety, high blood pressure. The list goes on and on and on for people who cannot wear this mask. I have to go out and shop. I spend hours on a Friday shopping. There's no way, okay? Why should I be ostracized from the public? Or stick out like a sore thumb? Because even these stores are pressuring people to be able to shop. Okay, so 99.9% of their environment in the store are in masks, whether people agree with it or not. But what about me? I stick out like a sore thumb? So I'm gonna get harassed, yelled at, maybe even attacked? I was born and raised in, and I have to say this, northern California. My husband laughs all the time because it's two different worlds, okay? I'm 46 years old. I lived 40 years of my life in California, and I watched my state go to hell. I hope Wisconsin doesn't become California. I really do. And we live in a small area here. This is where I do all my business. It's like, we're a small area. I mean, I know we have the tourism, all of that. But people from big cities don't even want it. I mean, this has just caused such division in people. And I don't know. I could, I could go on and on and on, but it just, I hope that people who are for this mandate stop and think like, I think someone said earlier, it's not a cookie-cutter decision to solve this problem. And there is a lot of science that shows this mask does not work. This virus is so microscopic, okay? If the air is more dense than this, and, and this might sound silly to some of you, but I used to do huge arches of balloons for bike-a-thons and, you know, marathons and stuff like that. Helium is so fine that it will get through the latex, okay? And that's more of a solid barrier than your mask.
I'm sorry, can you, can you wrap it up? I think we have time for everyone.
Okay, my last point. So talking about air and density. If the mask lets the air, which is very dense, come in and out, in and out, in and out, okay? Like I said, with a balloon, latex barrier. The air, if you put, if you put helium into a balloon, which is very fine molecules, and you don't put some kind of, there's, there's a product we used to use to put in the balloon to create more of a barrier, you notice a party, the balloon is up, it's down next morning on the floor, okay? But if you put fresh air in a balloon, it will, it doesn't make it float, but it will not come down as quickly. So my point is, the air that we breathe is more dense than this virus. This virus is just going in and out. It, it does not do anything. And again, freedom first, but you guys need to think about people with disabilities.
Can you make your final point, please?
Okay, yes, just think about people with disabilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishes to speak this evening? Anyone else? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Yeah, I'm Martin Bruno from N 2646 South Como, Lake Geneva. I did serve in Vietnam with honor. And I also am a healthcare professional. I train people. I've studied the science for 20 years plus. I have a master's degree in this. This harbors germs the minute you put it down. If you don't clean a cloth mask every day, you're breathing in your own germs and toxins. This does, you know, this is a pandemic, but for what someone else said, there was also a pandemic in '57, '58, H2N2, which killed 126,000 Americans. So this is nothing strange to this country. About the swine flu, all these other things happen. Let people decide for themselves. I work with all different age groups. Let the person who has a pre-existing condition or a comorbidity, as they professionally say, let them decide. If you need it, if you don't feel safe, wear a mask. This does not help me to protect you at all. It actually makes me sick from the CO2, all the toxins you're breathing back in. This is, I hate to say it, it's a farce. Take care of your health. That's why I specialize in it. Take care of your health, and the chance of getting sick. There was that one person in this whole county that has died who didn't have a comorbidity or wasn't in a nursing home. I think there's two people that were. The rest died because they were very sick, pre-existing, their health is poor. And I deal with, I have a masters also in senior fitness. And if you stay fit, and I'm 67 years old, if you stay fit, you stay healthy. Wash your hands, take some precautions. I'm, I agree. But putting this on, it is not the solution. It's, you're taking away my freedom to decide how I take care of my health. And I try to take care of other people's health all day long. I love to make people healthy. But this does not do it. By the end of the day, if I, I try to update myself. My nose is running, the CO2 ingested, the germs. I feel horrible. And I'm looking at this from a professional point of view. Forget politics, I view it health. And this does more harm than good. I'll cut it short, make a decision for freedom because you should decide who is in charge of your health, not someone else. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
My name is John, also have been part of the Safe at Home program. I just, I was on the county website today. But I was wondering, I have to wear a mask at work all day. I manage a business and so I'm concerned about people and, and, you know, how bad this is. So I get on the county website and I'm looking at it. Well, how bad are the numbers in Walworth County here? And currently, so we've had 100, we've had 1,000 cases, 1,072 cases, okay? Out of those 1,072, 969 have recovered. Two people are in the hospital. And 80 people are at home. Apparently it's not, they're not sick enough to be in the hospital. The point about what we all were listening to when this thing first came out was we have to shut the businesses down, we have to wear masks, we have to flatten the curve, we have to keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed. Two people in Walworth County in the hospital is not overwhelming the system. 80 people at home that are not sick enough to be in the hospital is not overwhelming the system. I mean, in a county that we supposedly were rated an F for social distancing, apparently we're not doing so bad. The point of this was never that people were, oh, you won't get sick. That wasn't the fear that we were sold in the beginning. It was people are going to die. People are going to overwhelm the hospital system. It's not going to handle it. Obviously, we can see that there hasn't been a mask mandate. People from Wisconsin, from Illinois are coming like crazy. There's 112 million visitors to Wisconsin every year. And according to the stats I just looked up, we're fifth in the whole state as far as tourism goes. So I don't know how many millions of people come to Walworth County or to Lake Geneva in particular. But if, if, you see people all the time that are up here. Illinois plates, all over the place, people are not wearing masks. And we have two people in the hospital. All the people that have, have passed away, out of all of those 21 people, we have more car fatalities in Walworth County than we have COVID deaths. And nobody is talking about any, you know, car fatalities. And the last thing is that we've had, out of all the people that we've had, according to the state, to the Walworth County numbers, is that patients with pre-existing mental conditions, we've had 21 deaths. 20 of those all had, had pre-existing conditions. 18 of those, they say, is COVID is the cause of death out of 18. And out of the, the eight, I mean, deaths occurred in a healthcare facility. Or, and if you go look at the state numbers, like assisted living and stuff, really the serious, the people that we need to be protecting are the people in assisted living homes and senior centers and healthcare facilities. Those are the people that are having a serious, serious problem with this. The people that are under, one person was in the news just the other day in the newspaper, right? One person died under 65, the person was 64. Nobody else is really in danger of dying from this right now. So I don't know, I'm just saying, I think if we look at the numbers, people are talking about science and the authors are up here and they're freaking out. What we don't know, where, where people are against the mask, they're being scientific. We're just going off the county numbers. They're not that bad. It's not work, it doesn't justify two people being in the hospital to mandate all of the economic turmoil that's in, in damage that's going to happen because of it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening like to comment? Yes, sir. State your name and address at the microphone, please.
Yes, my name is Jeremy Brady, I'm in Walworth County. You know, I was just at Walworth County, we met there just last week. I wasn't aware that we could speak if I didn't live in Lake Geneva, so I'm not a Lake Geneva resident, but I do live in Walworth County. First, I do want to apologize to Officer Bridget for our conversation with her. I respect our law enforcement. I stayed in this room without a mask on because I wanted to hear all the viewpoints. I hear a lot of emotions going on in this room and it touches me. There's a lot of people that are upset. They're worried about their health. They're worried about their children's health. They're worried about their community. They're worried about you. They're worried about a lot of things. We got to put emotions aside as hard as it is and start looking at science. Science is where we got to look. We can't rely on the numbers that have been given from the CDC who just lost its credibility in numbers now after you reported to the White House. When we have states like Florida reporting 100% in positive cases from 98% and then coming back and regressing and saying it's 9.8%. We have to understand what is health. If I went around this room and I asked every single individual in here, what does it mean to be healthy? Most of you would say, I look good and I feel good. And I'm going to tell you, that's not what health is. WHO, who I don't give much credit to, but they define it as, health is a state of optimum physical, mental and social well-being without merely the absence of disease and infirmity. That's the definition of health. So when we're sitting up here talking about what it means to be healthy, you have to understand what it is. It's not how you look and it's not how you feel. Who's a family member of cancer who went in for a routine exam is diagnosed with lung cancer, breast cancer, had no idea they had it? But they looked good, they felt good, they ran marathons. Were they healthy? The answer is no. Their body wasn't working the way it was designed by our creator. We have a mask, it's built inside our immune system. That's the greatest mask in the world. So when you're sitting on the panel and you're sitting there wondering, what are, what are we going to do? And I, I don't envy any of your positions. I feel bad for all of you. This is not an easy decision. It's one that has already been made. I did not know that as well. So maybe it will be an easy decision this evening to stay where you were already voted. But you need to ask yourself, ask yourself this question. For the pro-mask wearers who are for masks, when will you feel safe to go back in public, go back to work without a mask? That's the number one question. The second question you need to ask is during the next year, coming year's flu season. Are you going to wear a mask every single year during flu season? And thirdly, it's been brought up, and I have a few people in here, when has, when has it become someone else's responsibility for your health? You have to take your own responsibility for your, your health. You see, I see a lot of practice members in my office. I have two of the largest practices in Walworth County. And I see a lot of children, a lot of children with Alzheimer's, ADHD, on the spectrum disorder, asthmatic children. I see children coming in our offices right now practicing wearing masks to go back to school. That's ridiculous. These kids are already afraid. They're already afraid that they couldn't go to their friend's birthday party. We have no random controlled trials or studies that prove the effectiveness of masks. And I have all the research, if any of you want it, want it. We have no random controlled studies to show these effects that it's going to have on our children years to come. But we have studies that show that it increases heart rate, increases your blood pressure, increases hypoxia, increases hypoxia. It increases or decreases your immune response. We have all the research that shows that, but no one talks about that. No, it's not. The masks still work. They have a 30% failure rate with N95 mask, which is the cream of the prop mask. So this question really isn't about masks or no masks. It really is about what is your God-given right to choose for you and your family? And that's what you have to consider when you're making this vote. You can't rely on the data. Call your local hospitals. That's what I recommend you do. Call your hospitals and see how many active diagnoses, our primary diagnoses in the hospitals in our Walworth County right now. Primary diagnosis. Not the fact that they're removing, you know, whooping cough, pneumonia. They just said, we're just removing homicides and suicides? Well, that should never have been in the list in the first place. You got to look at the numbers. Because the numbers, well, depending on who's presenting them, aren't going to lie to you. But I would call your local hospitals. But when you're sitting up here and you're going to make a decision, remember those three questions. And remember that, in the words of one of my mentors, that fear, fear is the fire that fuels all furnace of disease. Fred H. Barge. Fear is the fire that fuels all furnace of disease. We cannot allow fear to dictate the direction that we go in our county and in Lake Geneva. So I thank you for your time and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think you got a little extra time, I forgot to set the clock. Anyone else this evening wish to speak? Anyone out in the hallway or upstairs in the police training room?